Seven o'clock. We can officially call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. All rise please as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight is a public hearing. We have a first public hearing is to receive public comment concerning a proposed amendment to the Simsbury Code of Ordinances pertaining Section 123.7 concerning the correction of blight ordinance violation by the town. The proposed change allows the town to go onto property when there's a blight situation and there's no cooperation from the property owners, where we can't get in touch with the property owners, and will allow us to go on the property, make the necessary corrections, and then lien the property. And that's the only proposed change in the ordinance. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to the ordinance? Yes.
Joan Cook, 26 Wickham Drive. I am against having any employee of the town entering any private property without permission from the owner or agent. The town employee can review the blight from the road as most of the blight is in plain sight. The police are required to get a warrant to enter a person's property. Why should the town employee have the ability to circumvent the law? Why not get a warrant? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Robert Callishman, Simsbury. Well, we have the Consular here. Regarding this ordinance or this proposed ordinance, I truly don't feel there's a need for it. If the town feels that they're more or less being harmed, we have a town attorney that's in Hartford or wherever. He can just walk over to the courthouse, get himself a court order, and serve it on the parties or party involved. Rather than go around like the Schwarzer housing where you're going to look at somebody's house, or you're going to get a neighbor that's going to get in an argument with his neighbor, and before you know it, they're going to go over the tree, over the fence, and this, that. I think the obligation rests with the court. And additionally, in addition to that, I think you're all familiar with my position on the Constitution, both United States and state Constitution. And both are very explicit. And you know, particularly Simsbury, these are Connecticut Yankees. And I think you should keep their right of privacy. And if you want to go on that property, go on the property with a court order. If you want to make sure that the grass is three inches high, that's all that takes is a drive-in. And if there's anything, any malfeasance or anything wrong going on the property, you have your police department, and they can go on the property with what is known as a John Doe warrant. They can walk right on the property. They don't have to go to a court. They walk right on the property, they've got a John Doe warrant, and they can walk in, look, and find out what's going on. If there's a child abuse or whatever, they can pick that right up. But a man's property should be protected. And fine, if you want to do that, Board and First Selectmen, fine, by me. The thing is, let's get your town attorney here, let him walk over to the courthouse, and let him get a warrant. That's what we pay him for.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any additional comments on the public hearing? If not, ask the Board for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The hearing is closed. Our next public hearing is to receive public comment concerning a proposal submitted pursuant to the Town of Simsbury Board of Selectmen naming rights policy to rename Mallway as Jim Gallagher Way. And just for the record, it's to rename Mallway, not to rename Jim Gallagher to Mallway. I think, I just want to make sure that's clear in the record. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to the proposal? Yes.
Naming the road should be reserved for someone who is dead and has not made a lasting effect, and has made a lasting effect on the town. It should not be used for someone who is a member of a board or commission for a long period of time as Jim Gallagher. Jim Gallagher's service to the town does not meet the minimum requirement of a lasting legacy to the town. Naming roads should be applied very sparingly, and I urge this Board to deny the application. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Robert Callishman, Simsbury. I'd like to remind yous all, I stood right here, oh, a year, year and a half, two years ago, regarding to Sergeant Felix Delgado, who lost his life in Iraq for his country. And at that time, I asked Tom Vincent, who was the First Selectman, that I wanted the, I would like to have that little corner down on Iron Horse Boulevard entering into the Performing Arts Center, which I refer to as Vanity Row, where all the big companies are listed, where they gave the money to the town to build the performing arts. That was a mistake too. But getting back to that, and I asked to have that little corner given to memory of Sergeant Delgado, who made the supreme sacrifice. And I was, oh, we're going to take care of it. And the next thing I knew is the garden club was in there. That was political. And they named the road out by the high school for Sergeant Del Greco, which was nice, but not as nice as it would have been if it were on, in front of the performing arts, because he had gone to high school here, and he had gone into the Army, gave his life for a country. That's the type of thing that we should use, you know, to name a street after or a road after. All respect I have to you, Mr. Gallagher, I see where we're going with this thing. And I look and I see, right in front of me this evening, I see, I see Mr. Ryan. He's politically connected. We're all aware of that. And the others that are politically connected. And that's what they're here for. You take care of my back, I take care of your back. And that's not the way it should be. When we look to McLean, here we have an astute governor that gave land, and they named a park after him. McLean, he was a governor. Then we have that Secretary of the Interior under Roosevelt, that they named the tree after by the river down here. He was a distinguished servant of the people. But just to start naming it after political, and then what's the next thing we're going to go through? You're going to leave First Selectmen. What's the next one we're going to go through? We're going to rename the high school Mary Glassman High School? Or we're going to name the thing Morrow Worthheimer High School? Is that what we're going to go into? Where we're going to start with the political things? And I think we just should stay away from it. If we're going to honor somebody, the people we should honor are Felix De Greco. We're very short in coming and giving him the honors, because all in all, like was said, oh, the family didn't want it. Well, the family did want it. Because if you go in the Blue Book, you'll see, right on the front of the Blue Book, I think it's three or four years ago, you'll see Sergeant Del Greco's picture in the Blue Book. So he's remembered by the state, but we could have done so much more for that young sergeant, and we're neglectful. And now we're getting into a thing where we want to take care of somebody that served on the zoning board. And all the respect we have out, it's not personal, I just think we shouldn't go there.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak to the public hearing? Yes. And then...
I guess I'm the political miscreant. Dave Ryan, 20 West Ledge Road, West Simsbury. I'm here, of course, to speak in favor of naming this road for Jim Gallagher, and I've made some notes, so at my age, I won't forget. I'm currently a member of the Zoning Commission. When Gail and I moved to Simsbury in March of 1976, we had to go before zoning to be able to build a barn, horse barn on the property across from what's now Abigail's. Jim Gallagher had already served nine years on the Zoning Commission at that point, and the meeting, if I remember right, went till about quarter to 12:00. And I thought, I'll never get involved in anything in town politics again. Anyway, Jim's 45 years of service in the Zoning Commission are just incredible to me. What fantastic dedication he has. Other people will tell you that Jim served Simsbury in many other ways too, as a youth sports coach is for one thing. Today, since the topic is Jim's long service and dedication, I thought it might be interesting to look up what Jim's first vote as the member of the Zoning Commission was. With Anita Schwager in the town clerk's office, we found the minutes for Jim's first zoning meeting on October 24, 1966. He was welcomed as a member of the Zoning Commission by the then-chairman Igor Sikorski. So that tells you it was a long time ago. Then in searching the record for his first vote, we had to wade through 70-plus pages of public hearing testimony in the minutes of that meeting. After the public hearing was closed, the Zoning Commission went into executive session to consider the merits of the application, which is what they did in those days. The executive session date was October 25, because they had obviously gone past midnight in that meeting. We should have known at that point that Jim was a shoe-in to last 45 years if he didn't quit right then. I thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Chip Houlihan, 2 Somerset Lane. I wanted to speak in favor of the naming of the Mallway after Jim Gallagher. And I think the comments about being very careful about who we name it after and the qualifications for that are well-taken, because the last thing we want is nothing but a bunch of names all over the place that get forgotten. And I think it's an honor that requires an unusual degree of attachment and service to the town. I've served on the Zoning Commission with Jim for a couple of years, and the Planning Commission, and it takes, and as this Board knows, it takes a tremendous amount of time to follow the issues. And there have been controversies all the time, starting with Jim right out of the box, which I think is very interesting when you're first meeting, takes you beyond midnight. It was not the last of the midnight meetings he went to. And to remain committed to that process for a term of 45 years is extraordinary. And I think that meets the standard that's required in order to bestow this kind of honor, that the service has been long, it's been dedicated, it has been distinguished. And, you know, so many people in town take pride in the way the town looks. They take pride in the way the downtown looks. And Jim was a part of that for 45 years. I think he meets the requirements of extraordinary service to justify naming Mallway for Jim. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
I wasn't going to speak to this, but... Stupanarsak, 119 East Sweet Talk Street. A few years ago, Elise Sermon and I had to go to New Britain for something, and we went and parked in a parking garage. And the parking garage was named after Linda Bogoslawski. And she died in that really, really horrible lottery accident. But I looked up, and I saw her name in a parking garage, and I turned to Elise, and you know that we're probably pretty conservative on development, and I said, "Do you think that she would want her name on a parking garage? And I think that if somebody's alive, and you're going to name somebody, something after them, it's good that they know what it's going to be, because I could think of other things in New Britain, maybe that they would, you know, could really maybe honor her instead of a parking garage." So, you know, I think that, you know, making sure that he's on board with it is probably a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? I just want to make sure there's... Before I let you speak again, I'm just going to see if there's anybody who hasn't had a chance to speak that would like to speak. Okay. Thank you.
Ed Pavage intended to be here, who's the Secretary of the Zoning Commission. The Zoning Commission did vote to support this application.
Thank you. Mr. Callishman? Sure. If you have something additional you'd like to add. It's a free for all.
Robert Callishman, Simsbury. Now, this is a... Mr. Ryan stood up, and rightly so, was given a second opportunity to address the Board. And that's exactly what I've been speaking about. This is political.
Well, this is a public hearing.
And the only reason Mr. Pavage's name is entered, or is mentioned, was more or less to let the Republican members know that the Secretary or Treasurer of the Republican Party supports the name of Mr. Gallagher. And it's just, we were in court, my attorney, the attorney would say, Peter Kelly, whoever would get up and say, "Hey, that supports what he's trying to say. That's his case, Judge." And let me say, that's my case, Judges.
I understand. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? If not, we ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We will move immediately to the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We will start from the top, so if you could all rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now open up public audience for general public and not specifically tailored to public comment on the public hearing call. Anyone who'd like to address the Board this time? Yes.
Joan Cook, 26 Wickham Drive. Now that the elections are over and the Republicans have a majority vote on the Board, with Mike Payne, I would like to have the Ethics Board give guidance to this Board on the challenges Mike Payne will have when voting for the budget and discussing various issues that come before this Board. Mike Payne has a financial arrangement with the town as a trash provider and the use and management of the town dump as a transfer station. A letter from this Board should be forwarded ASAP to the Ethics Board, so the issue of conflict of interest will be resolved before Mike Payne takes office. First Selectman Mary Glassman, in her final two years, should fulfill her promise to have a professional town manager as the CEO of Simsbury. Since the Selectmen's Office is being reconfigured, as Shawn Kimball will be acting as Finance Director, Tom Cook has evolved into a pseudo-town manager, and the First Selectman has greatly reduced responsibility. We need professional management to make sure that with diminished staff, the loss of seasoned staff, the town will continue to deliver services to the residents who pay the taxes. The Finance Department is a specialized position, and it is imprudent to just get a risk manager, Shawn Kimball, to step into the position. Now we will have a risk manager creating risk to our finances. The budget cannot reflect special interests over core services. It is time for a professional town manager to guide the town with diminished revenues is most important task for the new Board. First Selectman Mary Glassman stated in a recent article that it's the Finance Board that sets the mill rate, answering a question on the high mill rate, and that is true. Glassman forgot to state that the mill rate is determined by all the anticipated revenues and expenditures from the town. The mill rate is set high because we spend more than the surrounding towns, and in order to meet our appetite to satisfy all the lobbyists and political entities that are using taxpayer money for their special demands, we have a high mill rate. Since we are a bedroom town without a large commercial base, to offset expenditures, we have to pay more for our services. However, if we reduce expenditures, we might become more competitive with the surrounding towns. Simsbury has the reputation as a tax-and-spend community, losing our competitive edge. The new Board should eliminate the Main Street Partnership, a nonprofit organization in the town's operating budget. The idea that the town should run a triathlon is as nutty as a Snickers bar. We are told the town has a skeletal staff with reduced services, and this Board has voted to add to town employees' workload by asking them to run a triathlon. This offer should be rescinded. The golf course has lost money year after year, as reflected with the town publishing in the Hartford Current a deal with 53% off two 18-hole rounds of golf with card and more at Simsbury Farms Golf Course. Testimony from Gerald Toner, Director of Simsbury Farms, stated that most revenues come from out-of-town people. The golf course is not self-sufficient and has not been self-sufficient for years. Why should our taxes support non-residents' use of our golf course? An article of the Hartford Current reflecting the loss of revenue from East Hartford Golf states that East Hartford has contracted the operation of the golf course to Casper Group to stem their financial losses. Toner also stated that the revenues are diminishing as the rounds of golf are reduced. It is time that this Board reuse all the revenues and expenditures associated with the operation of the golf course and decide whether the taxpayers should fund the losses or the golf course should be contracted to others. Golf rounds are down not only in Simsbury, but all golf courses in the area. This Board should decide whether the golf course should continually sustain losses or use the property for a park with low overhead expenses. Now that it has been determined that Performing Arts Board will become a nonprofit organization, they should include in their budget the costs of all time and resources used by the PAC, including the town employees, stating that the PAC had $5,000 profit, did not include the time and resources from the Recreation Department, Public Works, and administrative staff, is disingenuous and wrong. Since this property was purchased with tax dollars, we should expect a realistic accounting of all expenditures, whether real or imputed. Since the property was paid by taxpayers' dollars for the enjoyment and use of the taxpayers, the town should not give away the ownership to the PAC and the Hartford Symphony with the sole purpose of excluding the Simsbury residents. The taxpayers paid for a consultant to review the use of Performing Arts Center, and this Board has ignored their findings. The taxes will increase when the Hartford Financial Services will be leaving a vacant building on Hop Meadow Street and reducing our grand list by $1.7 million. The promise for a big Y, putting a shovel in the ground, seems more like a wish than a reality. There should be a greatly reduced budget from the Board of Education as the enrollment is reduced year after year. There should be consolidation of services, and the Board of Education should reconfigure the schools by having a pre-kindergarten through second grade in one building. The future projections offer a continual reduction in enrollment, leading to a closing of a school, and a reduction in administrative support. As a result of the actions of staff and students during Spirit Week at the high school, I have not heard of any actions taken by Superintendent Matt Curtis of the Board of Education to make anyone accountable for their actions. What were the consequences for the administrator that was swearing at the students? It appears that Neil Sullivan, principal of the school, has lost all respect from the students, showed poor leadership abilities, and should be removed from his position. It is the responsibility of the principal to provide a safe environment for students and staff and hold people accountable for their actions. This issue should not be swept under the rug and ignored, hoping that the issue will go away. And all of my comments will be on Simsbury.com and Simsbury Patch for review. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the Board? Yes.
Robert Callishman, Simsbury. And I just feel obligated to get up, because I think a lot more people that are here should speak up and speak out. And they're being remiss in their duties as citizens by just sitting here, whatever. The report on Armistice Day, held at Ino Hall by the VFW and the American Legion in conjunction with the town, was very, very successful. We missed you, Madam First Selectman, but I can assure you, your deputy, Lisa, handled it in your absence. We addressed the audience, and it was well-attended, and the people came out to give homage to those that made the supreme sacrifice. One of the reasons I stood up to address it is that, as you know, a week ago, or a week and a day ago, the citizens of Simsbury have spoken. They've more or less gave, they spoke out, and they sent a message, and I think the message is loud and clear. And the message is, we need streetlights, we need sidewalks, we need sewers, and we don't need any more studies. Charette after charette after charette hasn't produced one thing but a study. And if you really want to get into it, the only thing a charette has produced is that the Hartford is leaving. And we're studying that. And another reason I'm up here is I want to congratulate the victors, and I want to console the people that weren't as fortunate as the victors. Because in my book, each and every select woman, select woman and man that served did an excellent job, and I'm going to miss yous. But getting back, the people have spoken, they've sent a message, and I interpret the messages, they're paying too high a tax, their taxes are too high. I interpret the messages, you're spending too much money on frivolous things such as the triad, this new, help me, Mr. Ryan, what is it called?
Triathlon.
Triathlon. You're spending too much money on that. We're turning the Parks and Rec Commissioner, we should name him a Commissioner. He's in charge of a horrendous budget now. If you look at it, he has performing arts, he has the golf, he has the Parks and Rec, he's going to have the triathlete that we added, and it's a tremendous budget. And I just feel that the taxpayers of Simsbury, they just can't, they can't carry it much longer. You just keep on adding and adding and adding. Case in point, November's here, we're going to have the stroll, the holiday stroll is coming up, that we're going to go through. That's going to cost us big bucks. And it's just time that you have to, you just have to say, "Hey, we can't use all of this." And now I'm getting reports from the Finance, the Finance Board, the rumor out there is that the new approach is going to be bonding. That's how they're going to get around it. Rather than increase the tax, what they're going to do is they're going to add the money by bonds. They're going to go out and bond. You're going to have to pay off the bonds.
If you could summarize, Mr. Callishman.
Yeah, well, in summarizing, is the people have sent a message, please don't ignore the message.
Thank you. And thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Other comments? Sue.
Stupanarsak, 119 East Sweet Talk Street. I wanted to address a couple of issues. I know that Rich is retiring very shortly and leaving, and I still have a drainage problem on my street that is now going to start freezing over. That was brought to us all by Mr. Payne and his leadership on the Planning Commission. So, I would like to hope that Rich would be able to deal with that before he retires, because I'm worried about the buses, and I'm worried about the kids having to cross the street and getting hit, because there's ice on the road because of the drainage that has, that exists. And I realize the town may have to, you know, now encumber the cost because of the fact that we didn't make the developer do it, but maybe Mike Payne can find a way to pay for that. So, that's one. Two is, you know what, I was just going to, I'm just going to address, well, the one other one that I want to address is, since Morris here and she got elected to the Board of Finance, I would like to suggest that perhaps we address again whether or not we're going to have public audience at the Board of Finance meetings, because we have a lot of intelligent residents in this town who probably have a lot of good ideas, and they probably want to come and go and have public audience. So I'm not sure if that's going to be something that... So, I'm not sure if that's going to be something that comes up, but I think it should be something that's addressed again now that things have changed on the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, well, yeah, snuck right in there.
Snuck right in. Going, going, and before gone. Charles Houlihan, Two Somerset Lane. I've been acting as the attorney for Redstone Pubs, and I wanted to comment with respect to the history regarding the request that's on the agenda for tonight. Now, Redstone is on Mallway, maybe to be named, change of name, and so maybe it's good we don't have the sign up yet, but the, that is an area that is, you know, is really dark in a recessed building, surrounded by a sea of asphalt essentially in that area. The only thing that is light and starts to add some of that connectivity that we've talked about in the downtown area has been the Redstone Pub where it's lit at night and it starts to develop some depth between the Fitzgerald's Plaza and the other streets where retail exists. But it stands out there in isolation. It stands out there in the old stables, and it's removed further into the back, and a sign has been sought to try and put it in there. The idea of a sign application is usually a fairly simple, straightforward matter, but one of the consequences of the regulating plan that we've adopted for the town center is that sometimes you bump into unexpected situations. This is one of those. The zone that it is in does not allow freestanding signs, which is what had been requested. It was brought to the design review, originally filed in June of 2012. And at design review, they said that the sign as proposed was generally consistent with the sign regulations, but freestanding signs were not allowed in that zone. That zone is similar to other streets where there is a great deal of retail traffic and number of storefronts and so forth. Not so for this particular situation, which is the only building on Mallway. And the, when the regulating plan was adopted, we thought there would probably be sufficient flexibility because you could come in with alternative compliance. But as you go through this, you discover that alternative compliance does not apply to signs. And so, Mr. Lebedkin spent time with town staff, ultimately resulting in a meeting in the First Selectman's office, including town council, including town planner, to try and to discuss the most effective and efficient way to get a sign. We talked a little bit about a text amendment, but the text amendment is a dawning tax. And I'd ask you to look at the front page of the regulating plan, and on there you'll see approximately 53 dark spots that are buildings of special significance. The Mallway is a building of special significance. And the applicant who wants a sign has to contend with the thought that you would have to see how a text amendment would apply in all 53 of these areas in order to satisfy the burden to get there. And the decision was made at the time that the most effective, efficient way to do it and limited way to do it was to have a zone change. Change that area to the zone that allows freestanding signs and not affect any other properties. We were scheduled and did go before design review and the Planning Commission in June. And the day before, Code Studio came in with an opinion, and they said, well, the zone change is, you know, rather drastic. We have nothing against the sign. We think the sign is a good idea. Really, our sign regulation is intended for new construction, not the preservation of the historically valuable buildings that we've identified. But, you know, you're caught here, and we don't like a zone change, we think it's radical. We think there should be a text amendment. And so, with that coming out, as a surprise, we went in and...
And I'm going to ask you to summarize.
I'll summarize.
Thank you.
And so, we were told to go file text amendment. We've gone and filed the text amendment. And so, along the way, we said, because of unanticipated restrictions in the zoning, in the regulating plan, we've gone through three different processes. We filed continuing fees, and the problem that is being faced here is that we're trying on a new wardrobe that has some kinks in it. And so far, the Redstone Pub has paid fees in the process of getting those fixes. I don't think that this is a precedent. This is something that, for instance, Antonio's has never had to deal with because they didn't have the complexity that we have adopted in the regulating plan. And so, we would ask that you consider that because the town has charged fees in three different ways, that some adjustment be made to recognize the difficulty of this unique situation.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who'd like to address the board? If not, I would just first like to recognize, we have a visitor tonight, Scott Cunley, First Selectman-elect from the town of Gramby. Let's give our neighbor a warm welcome and wish him good luck. Thank you. We look forward to working with you, Scott. We'll now move to a presentation. I want to recognize Mary Turner from the Recycling Committee with our thanks, all the volunteers who work hard to increase our recycling awareness in the town of Simsbury. So, before you throw away that cup, you think of Mary and her committee and recycle, right, Mary?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, I wanted to thank to Rich Zawicki efforts three years ago. The Recycling Committee's new swap shop was relocated within the transfer station entrance driveway. Since then, our exchanges have been more than doubled. The Simsbury Swap Shop Recycling Center has a friendly, open atmosphere where many residents have been able to leave donations of very useful items. Many others have been adopted and found new homes for safe, usable households, small furniture, accessories, tools, books, and so much more. Over the past 15 years, Rich Zawicki has been very supportive of Recycling Committee work such as this, and for this, we would like to express our sincere appreciation.
Yay.
If I may, I'd like to read this. The town of Simsbury Recycling Committee expresses its sincere gratitude to Richard Zawicki, town engineer, for his extraordinary dedication to the recycling, to recycle, excuse me, to recycling and continued support over the years for the efforts of the Recycling Committee and the Simsbury Swap Shop. We greatly will miss you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Rich, would you like to say a few words? You've never been shy before.
Oh, no.
Thank you very much, Mary, and...
Yes, thank you.
On behalf of everybody that's given me the opportunity to participate in a lot of efforts over the years and dealing with a lot of commissions and committees, and certainly the Recycling Committee has really put an extraordinary effort forth to increase the town's recycling, and their little swap shop is indeed a unique feature amongst many towns in our area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. And we're not saying goodbye yet. Folks who want to wish you well can join us in a retirement recognition ceremony this Friday at 6:00 at the Old Wall Tavern, and we'll officially recognize you before you leave. But we're not going to let you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick updates. First, I'd like to congratulate all of our elected officials who will be sworn in officially on December 2nd. I'd like to officially thank all of the candidates. We had great candidates on both sides of the aisle. In many towns, these races go uncontested, and I think it's a tribute to our community that we have so many dedicated, talented folks who are willing to put their name on a ballot and give the voters of Simsbury a choice. So, congratulations to all who ran, and congratulations to all who won. We'd like to officially invite everyone to a swearing-in ceremony for all newly-elected officials that will be held at Eno Memorial Hall Monday, December 2nd at 6:00 p.m. We are still finalizing the details, but we would ask anyone attending to please bring a non-perishable food item to be donated to our social service department and to help those in need. Again, congratulations to everyone for running and serving. Our next item is just to remind folks, it is on our agenda tonight, to put November 30th on your calendar for Simsbury Celebrates. It's a great holiday tradition. It is completely funded by donations. It's privately fundraised for. The committee together has put together, the committee this year has put together an incredible program that would be too long to go into detail here, but it includes music, including a band, a light opera company, Messiah Community Sing, to children's crafts projects, a ice carving demonstration, pictures with Santa, and the gingerbread house, of course. So, if you'd like to know more details, you can visit the website at www.simsburiescelebrates.com, and it has a complete listing of the results of the options. The ceremony starts at 4:30 with a fire truck parade at 7:25 and ends with fireworks at 8:15. I want to personally thank the committee for all their hard work each and every year, particularly Linda Johnson, Carol Brown, and Janet Calabro, and Tara Rea from the Culture Parks and Rec Commissions for all their hard work in putting on this extraordinary event. Finally, just a quick update, the Board of Selectmen had adopted the Simsbury CPACE Program, which allows the state to provide energy loans, and I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for approving that. We approved it a year ago, and it was designed to provide businesses and multifamily building owners with access to capital that they would need to improve fuel, energy efficiency on their properties. CPACE allows building owners to finance qualifying, energy-efficient, and clean-energy improvements by placing a voluntary assessment on the property tax bill. So, I want to thank our tax collector, Colleen O'Connor, for also playing a very important role in this process. Today, the Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority has provided more than $1.4 million in energy efficiency improvement loans right here in Simsbury. Those include solar installations and other improvements designed to help reduce costs. So, I want to congratulate the program, and just, we'll be contacting businesses. There's more information online at www.cpace.com. And if anyone would like more information, we'd be happy to provide it. We'll now move to action items. Our first item this evening is to approve the proposed amendment to the Simsbury Code of Ordinances, Section 123.7, concerning the correction of blight ordinance violations by the town. I want to thank all of the individuals who spoke during our public comment period. We appreciate the feedback. I'll ask our attorney, Bob DiCrescenzo, who's here this evening, to address a couple of points that were raised, important points that were raised earlier in the public hearing, particularly what the proposal will authorize the town to do. I think there's some confusion over what actually this ordinance would do. So, thank you, Bob, for being here.
Yes, thank you. I listened to the comments from the public, and I want to clarify that the ordinance amendment does not allow the blight officer or anyone from his or her staff to enter property for purposes, enter property without judicial action for purposes of discovering a blight violation. What the ordinance does is take advantage of a recent change in state law, 7-148FF specifically, that clarified that towns may enter private property under limited circumstances and only the exterior of the property to remedy violations that have been cited and have not been remediated. Now, this comes at the very end of the blight enforcement process, after there has been opportunity for the property owner to be heard and contest the blight, the finding of blight. And also, in the revisions, an additional step is taken, whereas the, before the blight officer can enter the property for purposes of remediating the blighted condition, the officer has to give notice to the property owner and give no less than 10 days of opportunity to clear the bright. This amendment doesn't take any of the due process protections away from a property owner. Also, the statute requires that a committee, as identified in the amendment, be established and that the blight officer seek the permission of the committee before taking the extraordinary step of entering private property. I think the intent of the change is to allow the blight officer in those very, very limited circumstances to enter private property where all else has failed. And there's a, there's not a lot of these. There's a few that we have found that the properties have essentially been abandoned, and the property owner has, is nowhere to be found, doesn't answer the complaint. The mortgage lenders understandably don't want to take responsibility for the property until they hold title through a foreclosure, and in the meantime, there's impacts on the neighborhood and potential for public safety concerns as well. And this was a gray area. The ordinance already allowed for this, but with the change in state law that specifically authorizes it, this amendment merely clarifies that right that was already in the ordinance and conforms it to the change in state law. I want to reemphasize, though, this does not allow the blight officer to enter the property for purposes of finding a violation. In order to do that, one of two things has to happen. One, he or she has to get consent from the property owner, which is the usual case, or we do, in fact, go to court and get a order of the court to enter the property. And I've written a letter to Hiram, and I think it's been distributed to you, clarifying those points and pointing out that the recent Connecticut Supreme Court in 2012, which dealt with a zoning violation, did not apply because it's at a different stage of the proceedings. It's at the beginning of the process, not at the end, and the ordinance speaks to the end.
Thank you, Bob. And thanks for that clarification. It's an important one. I think the points raised earlier about not allowing towns to go on without due process was important. The town would often find ourselves stuck in the middle between property owners nearby who are frustrated because pools would, fencing would be down, or, as you saw in 22 Lostbrook, you know, the property had deteriorated to a point where it was causing a public health hazard...
Right.
...to the neighbors. The town would give due process, but because we can't identify where the owners have gone or can't find the banks that hold the mortgage, there was often nothing the town could do. So, we were stuck between enforcing properties, which had been abandoned, and trying to address the neighborhood. So, this is allowed, excuse me, this will allow, excuse me, this will allow us to enter the property after all else fails that is allowed by a change in state law, so.
Yeah, 22 Lostbrook is actually a perfect illustration of the need for the change. That property, we actually did bring a lawsuit seeking an injunction enjoining the property owner from prohibiting entry into the property to make those maintenance changes. In the process of bringing that action, the property owner hired an attorney, and I was able to work with the attorney to gain the property owner's consent, but this came at the end of a very long process where town staff had no success in reaching the property owner, even though the property owner was not very far from here. We have other cases where the property owners are out of state, and the properties are in foreclosure, and the banks, some of these larger banks are getting through a very long list of foreclosures and are ignoring these properties, and this is a tool that town staff can use just to, the exterior of the property owner, I'll say it again, they can't enter the home, but they can send a vendor out there and mow the lawn, clean the place up so that it's not a drag on the, on the neighborhood.
Other questions for Bob?
So, would it be a vendor that would actually go on the property at town, at the town staff's direction to do the exterior repairs or...
Doesn't have to be, but what, what happened in that one is, that property, it was a vendor because the vendor is a landscaping company. And then, I got the bill that was sent to the town, and we immediately turned it into a lien, sent it over to the tax collector's office. She walked across the hall and recorded it, and under our law, that lien is now, has the same status as a tax lien, which means it's ahead of mortgages. And we are now foreclosing that tax lien as well, so.
If it was the, if it was a situation where town staff entered or went onto the property and made the repairs, how would that work if the town employee got injured, or would our insurances cover that?
Yes.
There's no exclusions on policies or anything?
Oh, no, no. As long as the town employee was working during the regular, actually working at the direction of the town, they would be covered on the usual town policy.
In this case, however, we felt it was more appropriate for a vendor to be used...
Yeah, yeah.
Because then we had an actual bill...
because then we had an actual bill, as opposed to a town staff doing it, and then trying to come up with a fair and equitable. We actually did get three bids for the work in order for us to justify that the process was proper. So our policy informally will be to not have town staff do it, and that will be the process that we follow.
Yeah, because then you don't get into a debate over whether the, you know, the right rate was applied for the town.
No, I'm more thinking like, suppose, broken windows or something, and you just simply want to go up and board the windows, and you -- town employee falls off a ladder or cuts themselves or whatever.
Yeah, for all those reasons, I think it makes better sense to contract out and assess the cost without the town doing it themselves.
Other questions?
Just in regards to that process, and you talk about liens on the property for the work being done, but administratively, are those costs also something that can be part of the lien and borne by the going out to bid, getting the bids?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can add an administrative fee. We didn't in that one because we were anxious to get the lien filed. But it would be reasonable, I think, to add some percentage over and above the actual cost for the administrative expense. I think that's defensible. And cases that you read on -- that defend these liens, there is that element to it.
And in this case, as Bob said, it was fairly straightforward. It really was outside maintenance. The permission, we had the consent of the property owner, so we wanted to move quickly, and that worked in that case. So it worked very well.
Yeah, and I'll stress again, this ordinance, the revised ordinance, will not be used that often. It's in the extreme cases because town staff is very respectful of private property. But in those cases where there's just no way, no other way to get compliance, it's -- we believe that this is a necessary tool.
Any other questions on the board?
Any? I think -- I'm not sure we're allowing public comment at this time. I'll have to ask the board. We already had public audience on this. Does the board have any objection to opening up public comment for this item? No. Okay. I don't have a motion to open a public comment. Town attorney will be here and ask -- be able to ask a question. Thank you. Any other questions on the board? Can I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item is to approve a proposal submitted pursuant to the Town of Simsbury Board of Selectmen naming rights policy to rename Mall Way as Jim Gallagher Way. First, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for adopting the naming rights policy. I think that provided a clear blueprint to consider naming. Previously, there was no policy. There was no requirement for a public hearing, and we think this is obviously working very well. It gives folks notice of what we're trying to do, why we're doing it, and gives folks an opportunity to comment. So I think it's our first time using the process, and I think it's worked very well. So I want to thank the board for adopting that. Just first, this came to us and had a public hearing. We -- I just want to re-review a little bit of Jim's accomplishments. So Jim has lived -- he's been hap -- it says happily married for 50 years. I'll leave it to Jim to comment on that, but his lovely wife Paula and their family, they've raised four children and 10 grandchildren. Jim was an all-state basketball player for Simsbury High, having been captain of the team when they won the state championships in 1952. Jim brought honor to his hometown while in the National Guard by winning trophies in volleyball and softball, which ensured he had no KP duty, so I'm sure there was a good reason for that. As you heard earlier, Jim has been a member of the zoning commission since 1966 and has had the distinct honor of being the only zoning commission to receive his emails by snail mail. And as in addition, Jim has enjoyed the unofficial title of being town historian because he knows where everything was or used to be in town. I think -- I just want to thank all the comments. They were very well thought out and very appreciated. I can't think of many folks who volunteer for their town for 45 years without any expectation of compensation, remuneration. Serving as a volunteer for 45 years is an incredible record, and I personally want to thank Jim for his service to our community. And Jim, your contributions to our community will be left for generations to come. You've had a role in every zoning decision for the last, you know, 45 years, which is incredible. And, you know, I think it's a tribute to you that your peers would bring this honor forward and ask a very significant honor to be awarded to you, because I think the comments earlier made that we don't do this every day, and we shouldn't do this every day. And so maybe we only do it when someone serves for 45 years. But I think you're certainly -- your exemplary record is certainly much appreciated, and hopefully will be an inspiration to others to serve as you have. So I will vote in favor of the nomination. Any further comments? Maura, and then Nancy.
Thank you, Jim, for your service. I guess you are like the Cal Ripken of municipal government.
[laughing]
I had to get something baseball in there, but thank you very much for your service.
Other comments?
Just for disclosure, I did -- I did, as the board directed me to, and I did ask Jim if he had any objection to the naming policy going forward, and you said no, right? So I just want to get on the record that you're okay with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Why don't you wait till we vote, because you don't --
You never know how it's going to go. You know how that goes.
It's what you -- where you might say may be different. At this point, if there's no additional comments, do we have a motion before us?
I would happily make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations to you. Now you can --
I'll say it from here. I just want to thank everybody that did this. I'm not sure where it started. Mr. Cox, I didn't know anything about soliciting for this job, and you were right about that young lad that got killed. I didn't -- I don't -- I'm glad to hear it is a street named after him. I didn't know anything about down by the center down here, but Joan, I'm not dead yet. But anyway, thank you. I want to thank all the people who did this for me and the board also. And in my resume, you can put down that I ran for a selectman in 1969.
Make a note of that.
Yeah, yeah. Don't do it, because I got beat.
How does that work out well? Well, a well-deserved honor, and it's an incredible record of service. So you deserve it. Congratulations. We'll move on now to approval of the tax refunds. Our tax collector has reviewed and is recommending a total of $2,306.06 in tax refunds. Any other questions? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Move forward. Next item is to appoint Shawn Kimball as interim finance director effective December 1st. I want to thank Marianne Harris, who is our finance director, who will be moving on to explore other opportunities. She has been delightful to work with and has done a great job for the town, and we thank her for her service. It is important that the town have two signatures on all checks. In addition to the first selectman, it's important that we have a finance director who also co-signs. That's to protect the people of Simsbury, to protect the taxpayers of Simsbury. With the fact that Marianne is leaving effective December 1st, it's absolutely imperative that we have someone who can review and provide checks and balances. And I'm honored that Shawn Kimball has the qualifications to perform that duty. Shawn has done an excellent job in his role as risk manager. He has an MPA. I think the board did receive his resume. He's worked very closely with the finance department in all capacities, from personnel to human resources to preparation of the town budget, to bond information review. And I'd ask that the board appoint him this evening. Any questions?
Just a comment. I just wanted to say, Shawn, from your work on the budget this year, I think you are an exemplary candidate, and so thank you for submitting your qualifications.
Can I have a motion? Oh, if approved, this will also go to the Board of Finance for their recommendation as well. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move that.
We have a motion.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
I think. Thank you. Don't look so scared.
Our next item is to approve the public gathering permit application for the 2013 Simsbury Celebrates event to be held November 30th. Again, this is a completely fundraising event. It's completely paid for by the volunteers who in the committee. Taryn Ray from Simsbury Parks and Rec does a great job in working with all of our volunteers. It's a wonderful event. Those who have been to Simsbury Celebrates know what a great festival it is, and those who haven't need to come and see for yourself. So we just need to approve the public gathering permit application.
Can I make that motion? Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, approval of the sale of Pharaoh's Farm to George Hall and the Simsbury Land Trust. I've asked Bob DiCrescenzo to be here tonight to explain the proposal. If you recall, this item has been on our agenda various times. It's had a lot of public hearing, a lot of public comment. I know Dick Davis is here from Simsbury Land Trust, so thank you for being here as well. Because of the town's interest in conveying Pharaoh's Farm in a way that will preserve the George Hall farm as well and will result in the permanent protection of Pharaoh's Farm, which is not currently protected. It is held as open space, but it's not protected as open space permanently. And in order to do that, the Simsbury Land Trust went through a lot of hard work. So congratulations to you in the fundraising and also securing some federal grants. So it's a tribute to your organization and to your volunteers. Nothing having to do with the federal government is ever easy, and while we had hoped that this transaction would be a complete, one-time transaction, it is a little more complicated. So I know the board has a copy of the resolution, has received the information. The Open Space Committee did have a hearing or had a -- had a chance to review the proposal and did recommend unanimously its adoption, but I thought Bob could just walk through the steps that the town is being asked to take in order to ultimately convey the property. Thank you, Bob.
I still think I was here more on Dorset Crossing.
You're getting close.
Yeah.
The maps were bigger.
It's a tie.
I think my letter spells it out, but essentially, none of the substance of the transaction changes. The reason for the timing, the reason we're going to a two-stage closing is the requirements of the USDA grant are being interpreted differently than they were originally. Originally, we were going to have a simultaneous closing, and Mr. Hall would end up owning Pharaoh's Farm at the end of that closing, and the conservation restrictions would be in place to the Simsbury Land Trust, and the town would leave the closing with a check for $480,000 with both farms permanently protected. That doesn't change. What does change, however, is, as is laid out in the letter and more importantly in the resolution, Mr. Hall has to demonstrate to the granting authority, the USDA, that he holds title to the property prior to them giving final approval to the grant. And in order to do that, we have to have a closing. The town will receive a partial payment of the $480,000, which will be approximately $230,000. And then we will produce -- he will produce a title report after his deed is recorded showing ownership of Pharaoh's Farm. Then the money will come from the grant. The town will be paid the balance, and everything will go on just as planned. Now, if this doesn't pan out, if the grant, for whatever reason, isn't forthcoming, we will have a reverter in the original grant from the town to Mr. Hall that, as of June 30th, 2014, if we don't receive the balance of the funds, the $250,000 balance, title will revert back to the town on July 1st, 2014. In addition, they've agreed to give us a quick claim deed that will we record. So we'll have a reverter in the original deed to conveyance, and we'll have a quick claim deed that we can record so that it's really suspenders in a belt, but this way, chain of title will be absolutely clear that title is back in the hands of the town as of July 1st, 2014. We don't think that's going to have to happen. We think from everything we've learned from the Simsbury Land Trust, the grant will be forthcoming, but we need to protect the town's interests in the event that it doesn't come. Now, the original proceeds, the $230,000 from the Phase 1 closing, will be held in escrow. And if the deal doesn't pan out, then the money will be sent back to Mr. Hall, and the two parties will go on their way. And Dick, if I've missed anything, please help me. I've -- we've given you a second revised resolution. It merely changes some of the numbers. The change is found in Step 1, 2, and 3. Just to be clear, in the Step 1, the land trust will purchase and record a conservation easement over George Hall Farm. The payment will be $300,000 from the Simsbury Land Trust for the conservation easement to Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall will then use $70,000 to pay off an existing mortgage on the farm, which is essential because the conservation easement to the land trust has to be ahead of any mortgages. And the remainder of that initial funding will go to the town as the first payment for Pharaoh's Farm, 200 -- approximately $230,000. The town will convey Pharaoh's Farm to Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall will then prove that he holds title to the USDA. Presumably, that will result in the USA -- USDA funding being finalized. And then in the second and final phase of the town closing, Mr. Hall will pay the balance of the purchase price of Pharaoh's Farm to the town, and then the Simsbury Land Trust will obtain its conservation easement over Pharaoh's Farm.
Thank you, Bob. So the bottom line is, the town will sell Pharaoh's Farm for $480,000. The only change from our original vote is the timing of the payments in order to meet the requirements of the federal grant.
That's correct.
And to accommodate the land trust. Any questions on the board? I guess you did a good job. No questions. Can I have a motion to approve the sale of Pharaoh's Farm to George Hall and the Simsbury Land Trust according to the second revised resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations. We'll move on now to the approval of the community farm lease, the plan of use, farmhouse sublease with Gifts of Love. And again, thank you, Bob, for being here. Just want to introduce Mark Nolan from the Community Farm and Diana Good, who's also with the Gifts of Love, and their attorney, Priya Morganston, for being here this evening. Special thanks to Bob DiCrescenzo. I know, Mark and Diana, you've been here several times, and we appreciate your keeping us up to date previously to the merger, prior to the merger with your intent to merge, your update on the merger, and now, I guess officially, you have approved the merger. So congratulations. In order to meet the town's obligations, we have a lease with the Community Farm, and now that it's a new entity, we obviously have to have a lease arrangement with the new merged entity. So I just asked Bob if you could just briefly walk through the documents that the board has.
In a letter, November 8th, 2013, I forwarded to you, Madam First Selectman, the letter of transmittal, the revised farm lease and the sublease, and the revised plan of use, all of which I think you have seen before. This comes at the end of a number of meetings with Community Farm and their representatives to revise the lease and the -- approve the form of the sublease for the new entity that will be operating the farm. There's a couple changes here that have been pointed out. First is, under the existing lease, the tenant of the farmhouse has to be an employee, the less fee. And they asked for some flexibility because, you know, the person living there will assist in the farming operation, but they didn't want to be tied down to having that person an employee, and maybe somebody who's not technically an employee. The main point is, though, if the lease is terminated with Community Farm, the sublease automatically terminates. Because if the property reverts back to the town, we don't want the property encumbered by their tenant. You may make a decision to keep the tenant in place, but we don't want you to have to do that. That house -- That house, the lease expires, the house should go back to the town for its, for its purposes. Other changes, very briefly, it expands the, some of the allowable uses to the farm to allow Community Farm to engage in enhanced educational activities as well as fundraising to help support their good works. It extends the lease term somewhat, and it also importantly incorporates, for the first time, the plan of work as a lease, a requirement of the lease, as a covenant of the lease. So, we've worked for a long time with, with the group on this, and we think we've got something that is an improvement over the original condition. Priya, did I miss anything?
No, I think we got it. I just do want to clarify one thing, and I just didn't give you the opportunity. The agenda talks about approval of the community farm lease, the plan of use, and the farmhouse sublease with Gifts of Love. That's not entirely accurate. The farmhouse sublease is with, the person is going to be the tenant.
Be the tenant, yeah.
The farmhouse, who right now is the farm manager, and, you know, at some point would be an agent or somebody else who's assisting with the farm activity. It's just.
Thank you, and I think that the documents accurately reflect.
Yes, everything else was accurate.
But the, thank you for that. Any questions of the board? Any additional comments, either Mark or Diana, that you'd like to make?
I thank you now.
Okay. Want to wait for that, yeah.
I want to thank Bob and you, Mary, and everybody else, who's a representative of Community Farm of Simsbury. Your support and work with my client over these many, many, many years, it's just been wonderful. Thank you.
Well, we look forward to a great merger and wonderful updates, and thank you for growing food for the needy of Simsbury. I think we are meeting the deed that was given to us by the annual family, so thank you for that.
Can we have a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you very much. The next item is action on a recommendation of the zoning commission with respect to refund and fee waiver for the Redstone Pub. This is back before us. The board did table this item last time with two questions. One, there was a question about previous waivers. As you received in your report, there have been no previous waivers by town staff, so this, there's nothing, no precedent to other waivers. With regard to the second precedent, whether this will be a precedent issue, I'll let Bob address that this evening again. But basically, we have consulted with town attorney and given the fact that this was a very unique application, I think you have an answer for that.
Yeah, a fee waiver is by its nature a legislative act. You're, you've got a fee schedule, and you have the inherent right to, or power to waive a fee under facts that are presented to you that you feel justifies the waiver of the fee, and those have been explained by counsel. There is no precedential value to any particular fee waiver because it is legislative in its nature, and if you approve one fee waiver based on a certain set of facts, then that precedent doesn't carry over to another separate set of facts that you may be confronted, so you're not bound in any way by an action you may take tonight for or against the fee waiver.
Thank you, Bob. Just to recap, we did refer this to the zoning commission. I want to thank the zoning commission for considering this. They did have a recommendation for us. Based on that recommendation and Bob's recommendation tonight, I would ask the board of selectmen, make a motion that the board of selectmen accept the zoning commission recommendation. Is there a second?
Is there a motion?
I'm making the motion.
Oh, I'll second.
Discussion.
I just had a question again. On the refund to the half amount, that particular process that took place, that was around the text amendment, or the zone change, rather, correct? Yes.
Other questions? Comments?
Assuming this is approved tonight, where does the whole issue of the sign stand going forward?
In applications, or, the old, the original application was really never decided, so we're submitting the old sign with the other materials, and now we're, you know, and it's being submitted pursuant to the text amendment that was approved.
And do you feel that you understand the process now?
Yes, I think so, and I think, I think it, I think it approved it for, the text amendment approved it, it's primarily historical buildings, you know, on the east side of 10 there.
Other questions? Comments? Just want to thank the comments. I know we don't waive fees, and we did receive some emails about, a concern about waiving fees. I think both Chip and Bob outlined the specifics for this application, and the zoning commission agreed that this was the first time that the zone change had issue, had come up under a new code, and so I think it's very important that the record reflect that this is not intended to set a precedent, even though Bob stated adequately and wonderfully that it wouldn't set a precedent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item is update on Aquarian Company rate increase. We can't take action on this, this evening because we do not have a quorum on that item, so we'll just move to other business. I just wanted to publicly recognize that John, that Jack Bannon was inducted into the 2013 Connecticut Veterans Hall of Fame, and I think that's a well-deserved honor for Jack's service to his country, and we're very proud of him, and we're sorry that he's not here to enjoy that wonderful honor himself. Next item is to accept the resignation of Angela Campetti as a regular member of the insurance committee effective October 31st.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Just a comment. I know this is an important committee, so I would just ask the town committees to make sure that we can get someone on who can attend the meetings, because I know there is some difficulty. I know certainly this individual had to get to the meeting, so if we could get someone on there who can make the meetings, that would be great. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is to accept the regular meeting minutes of October 28th. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any comments, corrections? We're without our stenographer here tonight.
I was going to play, I'm playing the role of Lisa Heaven.
Okay.
On, so page 2, under Presentations, first paragraph, second line, it's Chris K-R-I-S Barnett, and she's not a builder, she's a real estate agent.
Thank you.
And the page 3, second line, it says, he said Nancy, and the blank there is Fellinger, And last but not least, that's 3, that's 4, page 5 on the bottom is the motion on the waiving of the $160. I was actually one of the folks who had abstained from that vote, so I was listed as having voted for that motion, and I had abstained from that. And that is all I have.
So, it's correct, you did second the motion to approve, but you did not vote?
Correct.
Oh, I don't know. Can you move to second and not vote? I guess you can.
Yeah, because you vote in the affirmative, or you make the motion in the affirmative. Second in the affirmative.
We'll let the record reflect. Thank you. Any other corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Any reports?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Kalasman for his presentation at the veterans' ceremony. That was a great event, and I know you appreciated that honor, and I just wanted to make note of that one.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Can I have some more?
Thank you. Next.